Good evening, everyone. I call the City Council Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, December, already in December 1st, 2021, to order. At this time, a lot of things to think about, holiday season, et cetera, concerns for folks. So we'll have a moment of silence for whatever you're thinking about. Thank you. Alderwoman Lee, if you'd like us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Brian, City Clerk, if you'd please call the roll. Dunn?
Here.
Dorman?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Cornet?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobson?
Here.
And Ambrose?
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor. Thank you, Brian. So again, good evening, everyone, and as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Hall, again, I'd like to welcome all of the people in attendance and anybody viewing our meeting on any particular electronic device. Respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind as you share your thoughts with the council, you're sharing them with all your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're certainly happy you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire. We all want to make Davenport a better place for everyone, especially for folks in here. If you have a cellphone, I'd ask you to please put on silent or turn it off simply because it doesn't interfere with people talking. If you want to address the council, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you, but please address us as a body and not to any one individual person. You'll have the opportunity to address people at an agenda item or at public of business, but public of business is for stuff other than what's on the agenda item. We ask that please keep your remarks to five minutes, and we know you'll do the exercise of rules that are commonly accepted of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. City Administrator Ms. Spiegel's entry update tonight.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. So then we move on. There's no public hearings tonight, so we'll go right to petition communications. I have just two. Wonderful event today. Everybody saw, and I encourage you, you know, that I-74 bridge out there. I think we set the standard now in the Quad Cities for arches along the Mississippi. I know there's a place south of us that thinks they do, but we have two of them, and they go across the river. So it's really cool. That was nice. And then the other thing I'll just emphasize, I haven't said it for a little bit, so I'm gonna say it again. I'd encourage everybody, if you haven't got your vaccines, COVID, please do that the first and second, and then please, when you have the opportunity to get your booster, please do that. That's how we take care of this. The folks that are in the hospital, many of them are the unvaccinated, so we need to take care of ourselves. We need to encourage, and I'm just, again, emphasizing, please, if you haven't, and anybody hears this, please get vaccinated and please get your booster when appropriate. Thank you. Anyone else? So I see Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to call attention to a couple of things. First of all, today is World AIDS Day, and I wear red in honor of that and remembrance of those who have died from HIV and those who are living with it and that the fight continues. It was 40 years ago that this first, this immune deficiency syndrome was discovered. They didn't know what it was. It wasn't until two years later, when a, when a, the virus was identified. And then in 1988, we began observing World AIDS Day. And in the early days, when people were sometimes afraid of the people who are falling ill, there were emerging heroes, and like Dr. Katz, who's now helping us with COVID so much, and his nurse, Sandy Millage. They opened the first AIDS clinic when they went out, he went out to find people who were sick to try to help them when it was still St. Luke's Hospital, and he did that for many, many years. There were many, many heroes among the LBGQT population, and one of those we lost last week, and that was Clayton Peterson. Clayton worked very hard in fundraising because there was no aid service organization as there weren't in any cities, and he worked to all kinds of fundraisers to, to help with others, to help bring things, to bring this to life, and he was one of the founders then of AIDS Project Quad Cities. I had the honor of serving with Clayton on the Board of Directors of that organization when I came to the Quad Cities. He was a wonderful man, as the community knows. He lived in Rock Island, but he was loved, I think, across the Quad Cities, and he passed last week. He had, he was 74. He cared so much for people, and he was, it was, his, his commitment to working with people with AIDS was very strong, but he was also a veteran. He was a Vietnam War veteran, and he then was very involved with Quilts of Valor, which are hand-built quilts made for our veterans who have gone through so much and a way of really wrapping them in love. He did so many more things. People talk about a person well-loved, but I think this was a man who was adored by everybody who knew him, and I didn't want to let this, this anniversary of World's Eighth Day in the memory of Clayton to pass by tonight without saying something. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Jobson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to make a little announcement that on Tuesday, December 14th, 6:30 PM, at Duck Creek Park Lodge, we'll be holding Sixth Ward meeting. We'll have a member from Public Works staff come and talk about some seasonal items. Hopefully, not gonna wood, the snow stays away until that point in time. And on a lighter note, sorry to have to follow the, the serious, serious news that Alderwoman McGinnis talked. I'd like to just give a little shout out to our daughter Grace Jobson on her 20th birthday today, and jokingly, I'm glad she did not decide to run against me this past election because she would've kicked my butt. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I don't want Alderman Dorman to have all the cool ties, so I wore my Christmas tie today that I bought locally. And two, I wanted to announce my, my Eighth Ward meeting. It's going to be on the 9th at, where am I gonna, oh, Eastern Library at 6:00 PM, and we're very fortunate. Chad Dyson, Director of Parks and Rec, and Mike Schertz, who represents Eighth Ward on the Park Board, Park Advisory Board, will be talking about the status and the content of the Comprehensive Plan for Parks, as well as a lot of cool things that have been happening in the Eighth Ward for parks. So again, that's going to be at 6:00 PM. Anyone is welcome. So if you want to learn about the, what's going on with parks in Davenport, not just the Eighth Ward, you're welcome to come. And again, 6:00 PM at the Eastern Library. Another thing I wanted to talk about, this is really exciting, the Partners of Scott County Watersheds, I've talked about them before. They do a lot of great work here in Scott County evaluating water quality in, in ways that the Iowa DNR just doesn't have the money, time, and volunteers to do. So, and they're working very hard on our streams, getting them anchored, and working with the City of Davenport, the Partnership of Scott County Watersheds, and disclosure, I'm on the board, recently received $19,000 grant that will be joined together with some city funds to work on Duck Creek over at the Eastern Park, and the, the name of it is the Human Connection to Water, improving access to water to foster appreciation of our water resources that we have here. So what they're going to do is stream bank stabilization, as well as putting in a small boat access and launch point on Duck Creek at Eastern Avenue Park, which will allow canoe and kayak users access to the park. If you just want to go sit and enjoy nature, if you want to fish, if you want to wait, I very often see parents and their little kids waiting in the, in Duck Creek. This is going to be an excellent place to actually go in and start to enjoy Duck Creek and get to know it better. It'll also, it's near the Disc Golf Course, it's in a residential area, it's right near the multimodal path, and it's near an elementary school. So there'll be a lot of opportunities here, and hopefully that'll grow. And I'm wondering, Clay, could you come up? Oh, I also want to recognize Amy Kay, who is both, works for Public Works as well as the Partnership of Scott County Watersheds, and Kelsey Denoyer, who is the coordinator of the partnership.
So, yes, thank you, Alderwoman Lee. My name's Clay Merritt. I'm with the Public Works Department. So this was a great opportunity. We had a small stream bank stabilization project planned that we're gonna do with our own in-house crews, so it's great to be able to use and leverage some of our own work that we had planned to partner with multiple agencies, I believe RDAs for the grant funds and with the Scott County Partner Watershed. So it's a good thing to be able to accomplish more than what we originally intend to do, and hopefully this works out really well, and we can continue to do more of them.
I'm looking forward to using it.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And then last, I just want to support and reinforce what the mayor has said about COVID and vaccinations. If you haven't had a chance to read the paper today, we're starting to have increases again. We've got a new variant. We don't know much about that variant, and there's a lot of research going on. We have a large proportion of people in the ICUs in our local hospitals that are in the ICUs, they're there for a while, many of them are ventilated. It's putting a strain on the hospitals, and as it says in the paper, vast majority of those people are unvaccinated. So the virus, based on the positivity, is circulating widely in our community at a time when we're spending more time inside and with holidays. One thing we have to remember is Scott County does not release COVID statistics. So just because you don't hear anything about Scott County, it doesn't mean it's not happening here. It's just they don't release it, and the Iowa Department of Public Health only releases it once a week. But I just wanted to quote Dr. Katz, who is the infectious disease specialist that Alderwoman McGinnis talked about, as well as the Scott County Health Department medical person. In the paper today, he said, "We need to double down on approaching COVID." He said, "One, mask in all public indoor venues. Two, continue social and physical distancing. And three, use common sense, personal and environmental hygiene." In other words, wash your hands a lot. And, and the vaccination is really good for helping to protect yourself. You may get COVID, but it generally is not as severe, and you generally do not end up in the hospital. But some of those other methods that Dr. Katz is talking about, it not only helps protect yourself, but it also helps protect others, because even if you're vaccinated, you can still get COVID and not know it and be asymptomatic, and you can give it to somebody else. So in a way, it's a love letter to yourself, and it's a love letter to others around you to take care. And I'm happy to see as many masks here as we see in chambers. So that's it. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got two items to discuss. The first is also recognizing a beloved community member, Pat Walton, who passed away last week. I was, I was sad to hear the news while I was on vacation. Pat is a trusted community member, has done a lot of things in his lifetime for the City of Davenport. He was an assumption graduate, a St. Ambrose graduate. He was a businessman. He served on a lot of boards and commissions, and most recently, and the thing I know him for mostly is serving on the Riverfront Improvement Commission. And I, through his service on that Riverfront Improvement Commission, I learned that he was the mayor of the Black Hawk. So I think for the last decade or so, he lived at the Black Hawk, and one day, he asked me to come and, and look at his, the river view from his apartment at the Black Hawk and kind of explained his love for the Davenport Riverfront and the reason why he served on the Riverfront Improvement Commission. And in my book, he was a great Davenporter, and we're going to miss him, and we'll miss him on the Riverfront Improvement Commission, so I want to send out my condolences to his family, and, and that's that. The second thing is also, I went on vacation last week, and I tried to never miss an opportunity to stop by a river town and see what other river towns and communities are doing. So this time, my, my family was lucky enough to spend a night in Paducah, Kentucky, on the riverfront. It's a city of about 25,000 people, right on the Ohio River. And in 1939, they decided to build a 14-foot flood wall throughout their downtown and then a berm throughout the rest of the city. And I think I wanted to go and see for myself what it was like, and I think it was, it's a cautionary tale, because ever since they built that very high flood wall, 14 feet, is really impressive. They've been trying to fight back to get their connection to the river, because they have a very beautiful riverfront, and they have a very beautiful downtown, and they are adjacent to each other. But if you were on the riverfront, you can't see the downtown, and if you were in the downtown, you can't see the riverfront. And so recently, they've put this great big mural, and it's beautiful, and it's well-done, to try to create that connection between the downtown. So really, I just wanted to share with you, it was a reminder to me that this, this plan that we approved last week is the right approach. Yes, we need to, to offer flood mitigation throughout our entire city, but we have to do it in a way that maintains that very important relationship to, to the river that a river city has. So thanks for listening.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Condon.
I also wanted to observe the passing of Pat Walton. Pat was my neighbor at the Black Hawk when it first opened, and not only was he the mayor of the Black Hawk, it was clear that he was always having a lot more fun than me, enjoying living in that hotel experience. So Pat will be missed. He was a great guy.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Anyone else? Very good. So move on to our discussion items. We have four areas, community development, public safety, public works, and finance. And so we'll have Alderman lead those discussions and those agenda items. So the first one is community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will lead that. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have two items on community development this evening. Item number one is a resolution approving case P-21-06, being the request of CNL Plaza for a preliminary plat of Prairie Point Second Edition for a 45-lot subdivision on 19.26 acres located north of East 58th Street and east of Eastern Avenue. Is there anyone from the public who is here to comment on this resolution? Seeing no one, is there anyone from the council? Okay. This item will move on. Item number two is a resolution opposing any plans to redevelop the site at West Fourth Street and Warren Streets for a new, larger Scott County Juvenile Detention Center. And before I open this up for public comment, I'm going to take a point of privilege and ask Alderwoman McGinnis if she would read the resolution in whole.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Resolved by the City Council of the City of Davenport, Iowa. Resolution opposing any plans to redevelop the site at West Fourth and Warren Streets for a new, larger Scott County Juvenile Detention Center. Whereas, the Davenport City Council is aware that the Scott County Board of Supervisors will soon be required by state mandate to house incarcerated youthful offenders separately from incarcerated adults, and whereas, the council acknowledges that the existing juvenile detention center at West Fourth Street and Western Avenue is not adequate in providing space or services required for the young people in the county's care, and whereas, the Davenport City Council is also seeking solutions to address the community's concerns relating to youth, crime, and public safety, including the recent implementation of the Youth Assessment Center, which is a community-based initiative to address emerging issues of children and their families by providing professional counseling and referral with the goal of setting them on a more positive path, and whereas, the Davenport City Council cannot support any plan to redevelop the site at Western, at West Fourth Street and Western Avenue to house a larger juvenile detention center for the following reasons. Neighborhood impact. The site is adjacent to urban diverse neighborhoods, all within low, moderate income census tracts, where many families are already struggling with poverty, housing issues, transient residents, disinvestment, and a relatively, a relatively high incidence of crime. A detention center here does nothing to enhance or improve their lives. Economic redevelopment impact. Recent investment in Davenport's downtown area has begun to reverse decades of decline. Downtown is now the city's fastest-growing neighborhood where residents both live and work. The Davenport Downtown Partnership's recent strategic plan promotes continued revitalization across the area. The next opportunity is growth to the west. Removing half a city block as a source of property and sales tax revenue negates the opportunity. New businesses, shops, or restaurants will not locate next to a detention center. Transportation, access, and environment. The site is located between West Fourth and West Fifth Streets. West Fourth is one-way traveling west. West Fifth is an historic narrow brick street with modestly scaled housing on the north side. In the block just north of the proposed site, West Fifth is bisected by active noisy at-grade railroad tracks at the intersections at Warren and West Fifth Street and adjoining blocks east and west. Train horns at this location are a real issue. Permanent residents learn to adjust. Temporary residents, like the young people who would be located in the facility, would likely have more difficulty. Additionally, transportation of JDC inmates in and out of a much larger facility result in more traffic through adjacent neighborhood streets like West Fifth, Myrtle, and Warren. Higher operating costs. While the Davenport City Council understands that the discussion surrounding the size of the proposed new facility is ongoing, it is concerned about the impact to the projected operating budget for a 40- to 60-bed facility. More than 50% of the, of local property tax revenue allocated to the county comes directly from property taxes paid by Davenport residents. The county's own statements project the cost of an expanded facility to be 1.6 million to 2.5 million. The current annual financial, annual operating cost is 1 million. With already strained resources for both city and county, and as financial stewards for the residents of Davenport, this council believes expressing concerns about future county budget allocations is within its purview and is prudent. Statistics across the country and even within the state of Iowa project an overall need for fewer allocated beds in juvenile detention centers. Community-based approaches such as the, as the Youth Assessment Program that work to redirect at-risk youth are a growing alternative to costly incarceration. The City Council would recommend the Board of Supervisors closely examine these options as it addresses the state's mandate to remove young people from adult facilities. Transparency. It is unfortunate that the supervisors chose not to include elected city officials in discussions relating to plan, to planning for a facility located within Davenport's redeveloping downtown area. The city and county routinely work together on many projects, and the City Council is disturbed by the lack of communication as plans for the juvenile detention center were being developed, as well as public communication throughout the process. The potential impact of the new facility on Davenport neighborhoods and residents is great, and this process should have been done in a more collaborative basis. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Davenport, Iowa, that the council hereby opposes any plan to redevelop the site at West Fourth and Warren Streets for a new, larger juvenile detention center, and does not support a location anywhere within or adjacent to the city's most challenged neighborhoods. And be it further resolved that the City Council requests ongoing communication and more collaboration in any future projects located within the City of Davenport. That's it. Alderman Gripp.
All right. Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. We will now open it up for public comment. If you have a public comment on this resolution, please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward. You have five minutes to speak.
Good evening, council. My name is Kelly Wallace, and I live in the Fourth Ward. To say that I have a vested interest in this is definitely a fact, because I share a property line with Randy Burke. And so my question to the, to the county is about the EPA aspects of it. You're, you're buying a dry cleaner that's been there since 1951. He's got a basement, and they've done an initial Phase II. It looks like the initial Phase II has been a request in the purchase order, but it really needs a full Phase II. An initial Phase II EPA test for a site like Burke's is, can be influenced by the weather, it can be influenced by environmental, it can be influenced by the time of year that you do the test. So it needs a full Phase II. If you look, I've been in contact with Pam Houston, who is the community development coordinator for the EPA, and with sites that have the heritage of Burke cleaners usually turn into superfund sites, and there are state funds for superfund sites, but that's a five-year process. And he's been a dry cleaner there for a long time, and it's the industrial aspect of his dry cleaner, so everything comes to this location. So the ground plume under Burke's building, considering that we are four blocks off the Mississippi River, the EPA has said, okay, well, you need to do a full Phase II. Now, Iowa law may not require it for the initial purchase, but the way the purchase agreement is set up is Burke has a certain amount of liability to do some cleaning, and then it's all the monitoring during the lease. You're not going to find what's going to happen under that ground until you tear that building down. And then, is the county going to pay for that? Who's going to pay for the huge environmental problem that comes after the discovery? Because the way this purchase agreement is set up here is that this discovery is not going to happen until the county owns the land. And you're rushing to meet Burke's sale date of 12/31 of this year, and they, he says it's for tax credits. That's great. There's also EPA laws that change. There's an executive order 1398-5 and 140008 by the Biden administration that completely changes the EPA laws next year. So what's easy for Burke to sell before the end of this year is not going to be that easy to sell next year without meeting the due diligence that comes with the EPA site assessments. So that's my concern, is that I share a property line. It's not being disturbed right now, and it hasn't been, and it's kind of like asbestos. If you leave it alone, it's okay, it's really not going to bother you, but you start digging in there, and you start developing that property, and that's when you're going to expose all of the EPA concerns, because it is truly a superfund site. Almost all dry cleaners are. And when you redevelop land, I don't understand why the county, with land that is assessed at $614,000, you're going to pay $1,750,000 for this land. You can't sell dry cleaners only to other dry cleaners, because it's too expensive to develop. So it's got a lot of hair on it, and I don't understand why it's being rushed, other than the EPA laws. I don't understand why you're going to pay three times the amount for a building that it's assessed at, and that's not even talking about the $350,000 that they've already spent on a third of the parking lot. So what I would like to do is have the board ask EnviroNet, who's right down here on River Drive, and that's who Randy and Dan have hired for their environmental specialists, to tell us what the initial, what is the results if they've done an initial Phase II. I know they haven't done an extensive Phase II, because my building would have been impacted by that. So I would like to know, what are the initial Phase II results of the first EPA study, and, and see more concrete evidence that Burke has to, after you tear those buildings down, that's when you're going to find all the EPA problems in there. And so that's what I would like to see. The county is rushing towards this. The amount of money that you've already spent on this project could have built the, the building out on Tremont to house the voter registration, the reason why they don't want to use a building out there on Tremont. So I just have some questions for the board. It's very interesting. I'm committed, like I said, in the ham and egg breakfast, and this one, I'm the pig, not the chicken. I'm completely, completely committed, because I share a property line with Randy Burke, so this is going to come right up next to my property. So that's what I would like to ask the council, just to do diligence on the EPA aspect of this, because you could be getting into a superfund site, and if it's not done correctly, it will be tied up in courts, and you're looking at something being done. They don't litigate any less than about five years. So that's my two cents. And Marion, thank you for National AIDS Day. That's why my red scarf is red. So thank, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mayor?
So ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate your passion, but please, let's keep ourselves under control here, and I'd ask for no clapping, and just respect the people that are talking. Thank you.
State your name and address or ward. You have five minutes.
My name is Sarah Bartholomew. I live at 615 Ripley Street in the Third Ward. I attended the November 23rd Scott County Board meeting where they presented the plan for the new center, and I had many questions when I got home, so I went home and wrote for two and a half hours trying to figure out how to say what I wanted to say. So I'm going to share that letter that I sent to the board with you. I found the November 23rd, 2021 Scott County Board Committee of the Hall meeting to be equal parts illumination and irritation on several different levels. The first thing I learned was from Jeremy Kaiser, the Juvenile Detention Center Director. The Scott County Juvenile Detention Center serves the 7th Judicial Court District comprised of Jackson, Clinton, Scott, Cedar, and Muscatine Counties. This is a regional facility, and it has always been a regional facility. As such, it routinely detains youth- As such, it routinely detains youth from counties besides Scott. With this in mind, it really begs the question of why the board is even considering a site in downtown Davenport. The only way the facility could be less centrally located in the 7th District would be to build it in St. Donatus or Conesville. But in those cases, of course, it would no longer be the Scott County Juvenile Detention Center. The second interesting thing I observed is that the Board of Supervisors, with one notable exception, is pretty enamored of their concept for the new juvenile detention center. It's a gorgeous physical plan, spacious and airy. It doesn't even really look like a jail. It's more like a library or a school, to quote one person at the meeting. The planned intake and assessment program is held up as a model of insight, compassion, and forward-thinking. The array of support programming that they claim will be available to their detainees, from anger management counseling to GED classes to yoga to vocational training in the proposed secure kitchen space, is top-shelf. The amenities and accoutrement intended to make it feel like normal living space are considerate and respectful, and it would be perfect for a long-term residential confinement and rehabilitation facility. However, this center is not that. I was reminded at the end of the meeting that the average stay for a juvenile at the current juvenile detention facility is 21 days. Three weeks, on average. How much GED test-taking, vocational training, or behavior modification will realistically happen in three weeks? In the last five years, on average annually, how many kids have been held in the center for 30 days or longer? How many have been residents for longer than six months? This is a question I've not heard asked, and one that surely bears on this discussion. Is it 32? Is it 24? Is it 10? Is this facility just providing relatively short-term holding cells for kids who are awaiting a judicial hearing or a disposition of their case? It's not a reform school. It's not a correctional facility per se where inmates routinely serve a 90-day or 18-month or three-year sentence. Or is it? The common verbiage for this facility has always been juvenile detention center. The presentation at the November 23rd meeting called this new project "A Youth Justice and Rehabilitation Center." Is the purpose and scope of this new center changed and expanded from that of the current facility? Is it the intention of the Board of Supervisors and the management of our current juvenile corrections resources to create an actual juvenile jail where inmates will be incarcerated for extended correctional sentences? Because that might be a game changer for a lot of people. The plans presented at the meeting on November 23rd seem to indicate that the county is, or needs to be, or feels obligated in some way to enter into the business of sentencing and holding juveniles for extended periods. Why hasn't this been presented and clarified for the public? This is either a case of deliberate misdirection, a hard sell of an expensive and remarkable facility that far and away exceeds the intended service and needs of the counties in the region, or it is the obfuscation of expanded scope that many in Scott County, who will bear the entire cost, might find objectionable. Operating costs for this kind of expanded service and capacity must be double or triple the current budgeted expense. This is a critical question and carries a significant tax burden going forward for years, likely decades. This kind of planned facility calls for public input, discourse, and the opportunity for county residents to vote their approval or disapproval of the proposed facility and scope of the service to be provided. Why the big push? What's the rush? When will this plan be put on a ballot? Scott County residents need and deserve answers.
Thank you.
Was that my five minutes?
Yeah, your five minutes is up.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Please hold your applause. Thank you. I appreciate, appreciate you doing that. Step, step to the lectern and state your name and address or ward, please.
Matt Trimble. I live at 21 Oak Lane in Davenport, 5th Ward. And I urge the city council to support the resolution upon its third reading. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Guster. I live at 115 Colony Drive, Davenport. I'm a member of the, I mean, I am in the 7th Ward, and I happen to be the president of the Davenport NAACP. Iowa leads the nation either at number one or number three in terms of waiving black or brown kids over to adult court. And so, my question is, is why haven't Iowa figured out, like other cities or states around the country, that restorative justice measures work? And we haven't tried that. Ever since 1970, black people in this country have had an increase in lockup of over 700%. So this affects trickle-downs to the kids. And so, in, in, in schools, there is this record that is kept of all the activity, the disciplinary actions that happen. And so, this preventive measure that we need to take place could start at school and could further alleviate a bigger jail. Well, yeah, it's a jail for these kids. Now, the facility, they say is now going to cost about $22 million. That's about a 20% increase with an annual, with an operating budget of over $1 million. Now, I'm not that smart about math and all this good stuff, but I can tell you that a little light goes off in my head that tells me somebody's going to be paying some increase in taxes. Somebody's go, or somebody's going to have to give up something, some type of service as we move forward, as it relates to the shortfall in operating this particular facility. Now, if the board is serious about curbing or changing the trajectory of black and brown kids going to the juvenile system, then they could invest this money into some type of restorative justice process to help mitigate this problem that we have. Now, they talk about a 40-bed facility with the possibility of expanding it to 60 beds. The Iowa Department of Human Rights recommended that that particular facility go to, go from 24 to no more than 35. And so when the data reflects something different than what Scott County Board of Supervisors want to bill to, I got a problem with that. And then they don't give any money. I mean, I think they've given a, a, a little piece of money to what the city has done in their efforts to provide some preventive measures. $700,000 over five years, which is a drop in the bucket with respect to what needs to be done. When asked where was the facility going to be during a particular meeting here recently, one board member stated, "It hasn't been decided yet," he claims. Well, I don't want to say that that's not true, but we think we know where it's supposed to be at. So if they haven't decided, I mean, you, you're talking about a $20 million facility, but you hadn't decided where you're going to put it? Where is the transparency? Then, when you look at, uh, why are they building this particular facility? Does Iowa want to be recognized? Or does Davenport or Scott County want to be recognized as the leading county that drives those numbers that's putting black and brown kids in jail? Either number one or number three? Every business person in this county, every elected official, as a matter of fact, every citizen ought to be outraged at it. Really? I know I am because it keeps me up at night. I wake up wondering what I can do. What can I do better? What can we do in the community? I know the faith community. I know the business community. I know the other, uh, uh, so. But anyway, lastly, we support this resolution from the NAACP.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Jane Dux at 2111 East Lombard Street from the 5th Ward. And that's Mateo, my granddaughter's big brother. And many of you have heard me talk about my son Davyanti. That's his little girl. And I don't know, short of Ray Ambrose, Alderman Ambrose, how many of you were on the city council 10 years ago? I don't think too many of you were, but it's interesting. Rusty Boroff, the 180 program. And when my son got arrested at 15 years old, or 16 years old and charged as an adult, I beg, can he go into drug court? Because the underlying issue is always drugs. You know, his, his birth mom smoked crack cocaine every day. She was pregnant with him. He owed a drug dealer over $1,000 because he was being big man on campus. His freshman year, selling to the Davenport Central Football Team instead of, or smoking it, sharing it, but you know, instead of, and he owed the drug dealer $1,000. So that's when he pulled his first robbery, you know, to try and ward off the drug dealer. Anyway, no, 180 doesn't work with teenagers. Drug court's not open to teenagers. And it's interesting because Rusty Boroff, on the 180 Facebook page just very recently posted 10 years ago, "The 180 program tried opening a youth shelter and support center." The city of Davenport decided to put a moratorium that said we couldn't, and no supportive services could open in their city for at least six months. Even though we were approved by the state of Iowa, and the only program to receive the approval from the state of Iowa, it was a battle fought on the front page of the newspapers for weeks and on TV nightly. We find that, found a tiny loophole where we could open at least up a woman's home, which they also banned the city of Davenport 10 years ago, which is how, though, we started the Housing Women, which was supposed to be originally supposed to be for youth. 10 years ago, my son was 11 years old, you know? He went to his first after-school CADS program for drugs and alcohol where he met his first black savage gang member. We're sorely lacking and have been lacking programs and services in restorative justice, as Mr. Guster said, and as Ms. Bartholomew said. We've been sorely lacking, and, and, and all, other than Ray Ambrose, I don't know who else was on the city council 10 years ago that voted to have a moratorium. Thank you, Mike. You know, we have to do something different. We have to do something different. And you know, my son, you know, got out after three years of, you know, after he was arrested at 16 years old, and, you know, started off doing real well, but he came home during COVID. And CADS didn't operate during COVID. And the 605 Main Street kicked him to the curb instead of keeping him for the four to six months they were supposed to because he got a job at Tyson, and it was COVID. And it was a meatpacking plant. And the probation officer, whatever, never did curfew checks. You know, despite my calling and calling and calling, it was a speeding train wreck. But this little baby, you know, her name's Leilani. It means daughter from heaven, gift from heaven. And that's the gift that my, you know, son gave to me is her and her big brother and other siblings. But he got rearrested because of the lack of services and programs. And again, he couldn't be eligible for drug court because he was already a felon charged at 16 years old. So he couldn't do drug court, even though meth and Molly and all of that stuff was all part of this two-month downhill slide that I saw him going through. We don't put any money into drug and alcohol use services in this town. You know, there's no money going towards it. You know, by the county, by the city. CADS is, you know, Four Oaks is, somebody said to me today, actually, or yesterday, you know, Four Oaks is where you go and meet your drug dealer. You know, not for county, country oaks. You know, but the teenagers, I'll bet you anything, almost every single one of those kids that are stealing cars and whatever else they're doing is drug and alcohol. In fact, my kid in the ninth grade got picked up for shoplifting. He also had marijuana in his pocket. The police officer thought he was doing him a favor by not charging him for the marijuana. Uh-uh, that was no favor. He should have been charged with marijuana because maybe then he could have been doing drug and alcohol counseling at a more reputable place than the CADS youth thing, you know? And, and, or shredding paperwork by his 7th Judicial probation officer. That's what he did for community service. You know, it's a crime what we're doing to these kids. And, you know, building a bigger detention center with no programs and services. And my kid is part of the statistics that Mike Guster talked about. He's, you know, 2016, you know, 2015. And it's a, it's a vicious cycle because, you know, we didn't do anything for their parents. You know, DHS failed me when he came to me at five years old. And it wasn't until I adopted him at seven, eight, that's when DHS said, oh, by the way, mom smoked crack cocaine every day she was pregnant with him. Well, gee, thanks for telling me. Thanks for doing something intervention, you know? And he was born at home, so that's why there's nothing. Thanks for your time.
Good evening. I'm Lexi Hopkins. I live at 2721 East Plaza in Davenport. And I am down here because I want to thank all of you for the resolution that you're bringing forth. This is very important, very important to what's happening in this city right now. I have spent a good part of the month down at supervisors' board meetings. The lack of transparency is, is, has me just appalled, just appalled. In the first place, we had people down there to speak. We were allowed two minutes. We were told a 15-minute period, and then it was done, so everyone couldn't speak. We had cards waved at us. Your times, you got this many seconds left. You know, I mean, it was appalling to be treated like that by elected officials of our county. We had questions. We couldn't get the questions answered. We took our questions to Supervisor Ken, and he croaked. He tried to ask the questions for us. And when he tried to get our questions answered, he was told that he wasn't allowed to interrogate and to be quiet. That's what it's like down there. I cannot believe, the only thing that I can think is possibly an issue is that Ken is the only supervisor from Davenport or Bettendorf. We don't have city supervisors that live in this community. They don't know and understand this community. They don't know our neighborhoods in this community or the fragile issues that we have in some neighborhoods. They don't understand the important history of the neighborhood that we're talking about down here and the people that are struggling to make their homes better. I suggested that that $10 million would be better spent on housing down in that neighborhood. It's a proven fact that kids that live in stable housing and have good meals aren't the ones that get in trouble. We saw big groups of kids for Project Renewal down there to speak. These kids were amazing. I mean, amazing. You look at them, you thought, here's going to be our next Alderman, and hopefully, our next supervisors. I just want to appreciate, let you know how much I appreciate the transparency that the city does. I want the police to know how much we appreciate the changes that they're making in policing, the city administration, who's been very open to people in this community. It's, it's like night and day, and I hope that we can do something about it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Dutey. I live at 4725 Kenelworth Drive in Bettendorf. And may I write, read a note from Sister Johanna Rickall with the congregation Humility Mary, who lives on North Division? She supports the McGinnis-Gripp Resolution. I support funding for current and new family development programs based in black and Hispanic neighborhoods. Programs like Project Renewal, Friendly House, Lincoln Resource Center. And I request collaboration between county and city for providing positive programs for youth. That's from Sister Johanna Rickall with the congregation of Humility Mary. I want to thank all of you for listening. Thanking, thank you for slowing this, this train wreck down. Thank you for raising so many important questions about the process and the substance of this issue. Thank you for believing in Davenport kids and families. Thank you for joining with a neighborhood that needs your help. Thank you for standing up to a county government who seems to be determined to build a monstrosity, monstrosity of a building that will disproportionately detain black and brown children. And yeah, 10 and 12 and 15-year-old, year-olds are children. We have a lot of work to do to make Davenport an equal-opportunity city and Scott County an equal-opportunity city. an equal opportunity county. We will all be better off with your support, unanimous support for this resolution. We really need to get to work on the real crisis in our community. And that's equity, jobs, workforce development, and most of all, loving, loving our kids. Thank you.
Hello, I'm PJ Slapogen, 3rd Ward. And first of all, I was very happy to see the article in the paper this week saying that you were giving consideration to a resolution to address the Juvenile Detention Center. And I thank you for doing that. There have been many of us who have been working on this issue for, well, since it has come up and have just met up with walls all along the way with even getting up to speak at the Board of Supervisors meeting. With two minutes, you get your name and address out and you're done. And there's no feedback. And I saw a real lack of transparency. So for you to be addressing this is a real push in the right direction. And I appreciate you doing that. And I hope the resolution passes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe Miller. I live at 1354 West 41st Street in Davenport's venerable 7th Ward. I think that what's not being said enough is the fact that they are using, the county is using ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds, in order to actually, and actually build this facility. I was actually recently served as an ad hoc member on this very council. And this summer, when we decided our best use of those same ARPA funds that we were, we were given, we had two criteria that we followed. The first was alignment. Does this use of this fund, the way we want to use it, is it in the best interest of the spirit of when that, of the actual ARPA intent? And the second was distributive justice, you know? Does this, you know, actually going to be able to make sure that justice is shared equally amongst the people as a result of this? Now, as for this particular use, when we apply it to what the county is doing with this youth facility, I don't think it meets either of these two criteria. It doesn't. I mean, it's certainly not in the interest or the spirit of why ARPA was, the ARPA funds were released. And distributive justice, I would have to say no. It's, you know, it's location, it's, you know, it's the size of it. It seems to be not in alignment. It's not, it's clearly, the intent is clear as to where it's location, as to who's going to be the people who are housed in this facility. Now, I will say that they, the county seems to be a big proponent of restorative justice. If you ever looked at a model of restorative justice, it looks like a Venn diagram with three circles. The first circle is the offender themselves and the second is the victim, right? In other words, there has to be some kind of retribution made from the person who did the offense to the person that was the victim. And the third circle is the community, right? Now, traditional criminal justice systems, they wonder about, was a law broken? And how do we assess punishment for that law being broken? In restorative justice, we ask not was the law broken, but was there harm done? What was, what are the needs based on this harm? What needs have come up as a result of this harm? And whose obligation is it to fulfill those needs? Now, let's turn it. If you put this on the community itself through this act of building this youth detention center, is there harm done? Yes, yes, there is. Is the, are there needs that crop up as a result of this harm? We could be seeing it for decades. We could be seeing it for decades. And whose obligation is it to actually, you know, tend to these needs? Well, I think that this resolution offered by Alderman McGinnis and Alderman Grip illustrates that we're doing a, you know, a proactive, proactively trying to make it so that we never see that. But if we don't, if this doesn't pass, then, well, we're going to be dealing with it for a long time. Thank you.
I'm Mary Maher. I live on Davy Street in Davenport. Thank you, Mayor and Davenport City Council for letting your constituents speak. I want to encourage you to pass a resolution opposing a new, larger juvenile detention center being built in our regenerating downtown area. But please do not stop there. Keep up the pressure on the Scott County Board of Supervisors to include you and all the citizens of Scott County in the process on how to use ARPA monies for our community and our youth. These funds are to be a rescue for communities from the ravages of COVID, not to incarcerate our youth, which are our hope for the future. It has been shown that a 40-bed juvenile detention facility would not be needed to be built if more aggressive interventions for our youth are put in place to help our young people and their families during their time of evolving into being the adult they will become. We probably do need a better JDC center. Well, we don't need a bigger one to house more of our youth. Also, the new intake and assessment facility should not be in the same building as the Juvenile Detention Center. It sends the wrong message to our youth that we already think they should be incarcerated and that we have given up on them. A wider variety of programs and services need to be commissioned that kids and families can trust, like Lincoln Resource Center, Project Renewal, Friendly House, 180, Roosevelt Community Center, not just the one youth assessment program that we now have whose board is stacked with police and other people that are the main officials who incarcerate youth. At the Board of Supervisors meeting last week, old group who was hired to research and come up with the plans for the JDC said it would be a beautiful facility and would be a welcome neighbor in any neighborhood and that they would not mind living right across the street from it. Well, I say, let them consider somewhere else to build both facilities in Scott County. If it will be such a wonderful neighbor, how about building in St. Donatus, like the other person said, or in the city of Bettendorf along a bus route? I have traveled lately and people ask me where I am from. When I tell them Davenport, they say, oh, the place with the high rate of shootings and carjackings. I'm here to tell you, it does not matter how much money we pump into our city to make it beautiful or how much we market it for tourism. If we do not get at the root of our crime problem, we are and will be known for that and people will not want to come here to visit or to live. When I was a young kid, when I was young, kids that acted up were threatened with going to Eldora, which was where boys were sent when they were offenders. If we build a larger JDC and have to keep it full to make it profitable, we will be known as the new Eldora. Davenport and Scott County have a wonderful opportunity with the ARPA funds that we have been given to make positive investments in our community that will benefit our families for years to come. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Kirsten. I live at 2104 Parkview Lane in Davenport. I wanted to commend the council because I feel that the resolution that's been developed comes at this issue from a variety of perspectives, all of which are very important. You see the neighborhoods around the proposed site and you see the people, the children and the families who live there and the impact that this will have on them. And being seen matters, especially to those kids. You see downtown Davenport and all of the work that we have done in the city to revitalize it, to bring it back to life. Had a heck of a time finding a parking space tonight around this area, which is a really good sign. And we want that to continue. And it's naturally going to continue more towards the west. You see the citizens of Davenport, all of us, because with the increased operating costs, those are going to be passed on to us, each and every one of us. So I wanted to tell you thank you. I appreciate that you are looking at this from the perspective of Davenport as a whole, as an entire community, as a whole bunch of neighborhoods, because that's what we are. And I would really encourage you to unanimously support this resolution as a show of unity for Davenport.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Pastor Tom Thomas, 518 Brown. I've heard a lot of stuff said about the detention center. And I sit back and I say, I ain't going to say nothing. I ain't just, you know, whatever. Everybody says they've already made their mind up what they're going to do. Well, I disagree. I don't think that's what you guys are going to do. You've not made your mind up about it. There's some things we need to look into. I'm not going to take a lot of time, but something I want to point out. That money could be well spent taking those homeless people off of those streets that they're trying to put that juvenile detention center behind my church. Humility Mary could use some money because they don't have enough room to house some of these homeless people that are still laying over there right now. There's other areas we could spend this money in. You give them beds, I give them jobs. I took 15 of those kids that came out of that detention center and gave them jobs this summer, paid them out of my own pocket. Right now, some of them are working at UPS, FedEx. I take them to work every day. That's what you do to keep your community clean and safe. That's why I put, I wanted to put the church there, to make that area safe. I love to see the kids playing around. Every time I see a drug house or activity, I don't call the police. Hey, you ain't going to do that here. Am I taking a chance? Okay, that's what I live for. I'll call them if I need them, but I think I know them well enough that I could say, we don't want that in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is starting to be better than it was ever before. I'm glad to see you. But we're going to take a stand against that building being put up right across on the other side of those tracks from my church, just like I would if you tried to put a liquor store next to my church. I'm going to say something. Let's find a way we can use this big amount of money. They say they need more beds. No, they need jobs for them kids. They don't even, the ones that they're getting, they're just revolving door because those same kids are coming back over and over. Not that they're getting more kids. They're getting the same kids over and over. Where's the rehabilitation? If you're rehabilitating them, why do they keep coming back? Why are they still looking for jobs? Why are they stealing cars? I talk to them every Sunday and I've given these kids jobs. They're not bad kids. They just need to be steered the right direction. They need something to do other than steal cars. I'm just saying, we can find something else better to do besides build a bigger building and make more beds and put pretty paint on the walls and make a nice little waiting area because it's still jail. At the end of the day, it's still jail. So if you're going to change them, let's change them from the inside out so they become productive in the community and not isolated inside a cell. And then they think about how they could not get caught next time.
Good evening, I'm Cindy Winkler. I live at 630 Court in Davenport. And although I'm an elected official, I am coming as a citizen of Davenport to talk to you about the efforts that you have made on behalf of young children in our area with the Youth Assessment Program. One of the things that is lacking in the, in the plan in regard for the 40 to potentially 60-bed is the fact that they're not taking into account the impact that the Youth Assessment Program could have on the numbers. They are using current practice numbers and not in any way projecting what would change once the youth were redirected early on. The, the facility is not going to be built overnight. It's interesting that the law passed in 2018. The deadline is the middle of December to move the juveniles that are charged as an adult from the adult jail into the detention center. Yet the effort is just starting. I think that we have time to redirect the conversation. I appreciate everything that you have done on behalf of the youth and the families in our community by initiating that Youth Assessment Center. We in the state have no children's mental health system that is paid for. We don't have enough other services within our schools. We've been underfunding education over the last decade. And all of those have an impact in regard to what our families are facing. Thank you for this resolution. I hope that it passes with flying colors and keep up the good work.
My name is Genevieve Barafany. I live in the, I think it's the 4th, on the hilltop, Harrison, right up the hill. And first of all, Mr. Grip, you talked about the Ohio River and you reminded me that this summer I, I walk everywhere and I was taking some of the kids from my neighborhood down to the river. One little boy said to me one day, what's that? I said, that's the Mississippi River. And the discussion began. I took four separate groups over the summer to the Mississippi River, five blocks down the hill, and introduced them to the Mississippi River. The first five years of life are the most important to teach children how to learn, how to be happy, how to be hopeful, how to be decent human beings. Everyone who spoke tonight hit the nail on the head. And as to the EPA, thank you, Ms. Wallace. So, I mean, imagine we put the children on that land and wow, talk about a sentence. So I would like to see, we used to have community centers, you know, where kids could just walk into the door, all age groups, volunteers, older people. It was wonderful, right? You didn't have to have any money to go in there. No green tickets were needed. I'd like to see more emphasis put on teaching and supporting that effort, children from the ages of 3 to 5. There was a car stolen, someone I know, almost two weeks ago now. The oldest person had just turned 18. They did, you know, credit card's old nine. She left it in the car, you know, that kind of business. And I know you've told people lock it up and all that jazz, but it was unfortunate incident. These kids were running around. Don't know why they weren't in school. They were running around. The oldest one had just turned 18, so she took the hit, okay? There's nothing for children who are poor to do in Davenport. There is nothing for children who are poor to do in Davenport. I appreciate you putting the brakes on this. Absolutely. I live in the neighborhood. I am from that neighborhood. I came home to that neighborhood and I'm not going anywhere. And I'll keep taking the kids to the river with our feet. Peace.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item?
I sat with my leg crossed, but now I can't walk. Apologies. Has nothing to do with drink, Alderman Grip. I just, my name is Ken Croken and I live in the 6th Ward. And I regret that my colleagues from the Scott County Board of Supervisors, despite the invitation sent by Alder, Alderone McGinnis, chose not to be here. I, I have grave concerns about the impact on this, of this juvenile detention center on the community. The five-year average daily population of juveniles detained in Scott County was 24. The four-year was 23. The three-year was 20. The two-year is 19. And last year it was 17 and a half. The only way it makes any sense to build a facility with 40 beds is to import more detainees into this community from other jurisdictions. I think that is a regrettable decision by the county. I have opposed it since it was first brought up. And I truly appreciate the, this, this body taking time to actually listen to our constituents. Sadly, they have not been given that respect and dignity at the county level. And so it's, it's very important. I thank you. I thank you, I thank them, and I urge your support of the resolution.
Is there anyone else from the public? All right, seeing no one, I will open it up for counsel comment. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Makes you real proud to be part of the Davenport City Council because we're open and transparent, and we hear it tonight. Kind of disappointing to see and hear how our friends at the Scott County Board of Supervisors hold their meetings. I think our administration staff has a pretty good relationship with them, and it's, you know, for this to end up at the Davenport City Council with a resolution to try to get the Scott County Board of Supervisors to change, you know, their plans. You know, I, I think the city council will do everything we possibly can, but it reminds me a little over twenty years ago, the Seventh Judicial District wanted to build a halfway house prison where the old Sears building was, and I sat at meetings with the neighborhood then, which basically is the same neighborhood, to stop it. So we stopped it from going into the old Sears building in the neighborhood downtown, but guess where they ended up building it? Right across the street from one of the largest high schools in the state of Iowa. And there's not a week goes by where these prisoners are walking away, and they're not just simple criminals. These are hardcore felons, and they're walking away because the Seventh Judicial District was really indifferent about how they ran their operation. So, but when they just decided to build next to Central High School, you know, the community was quiet. No one came down like today. So, you know, I like to say that Davenport is America's greatest city, and we listen to you, we try to assist, we love the people in our community, we, we want every child in this city to have an opportunity. And, you know, what's, the way the system has been run, the way government runs things, I tell you, it's a failure, and I'm embarrassed when I see what happens from Washington Street or from Washington DC through Des Moines, all the way down to the poor city of Davenport, and some of the challenges we're forced to deal with. So, I'll talk to the supervisors that I know, and I'll support Mary and the resolution to try to get the Board of Supervisors' attention. And I'm so glad to see Cindy Winkler down here. You know, I served with her mother on this city council, and you couldn't find a greater lady that loved the city more than she did. So, with Ken, Ken, you're always looking out for the community from the shots at the stadium, being part of a championship baseball team, and I can't thank you enough. You know, we don't always see eye to eye politically, but there's few people that match your love for the city. So there's great people here, and I appreciate it. I'll do what I can, I'll support it, and I'll talk to the Board of Supervisors, and I hope our city administrator will spend a little time over there and try to do what she can. Thanks for coming down.
Alderwoman Dickman?
Thank you. First, I want to thank everyone who came down tonight and spoke of the wide variety of issues why the scope and the intention of this project are very concerning for this location. I think that the fact that you see so many people here, at least it's encouraging to me that there are people going to these meetings who are fighting the system that is trying to keep them from speaking and really saying, you know what, our community, we care about it, and this is not the right use, this is not the nice, not, not the right time, this is not the right place. I think we've heard a lot of really good things about restorative justice, you can see it in practice, you can see it in some of the programs we're doing. We want to avoid having to lock up kids. We want to, you know, teenagers make mistakes, but we, we want to get them corrected and into being, you know, productive, hopefully taxpaying citizens, not just locking them up and importing kids as some weird, maybe, I don't even know why, why this project is being pushed so hard. So, thank you all, and we'll certainly support this resolution and hopefully continue to see all these wonderful community members helping out our kids.
Alderman Dormand?
Thank you, Alderman Grip. So, with me on this one, I, I think back to all of the items that we see reoccurring every single time we pass our legislative papers to, on council, and we, we talk about things we want the state to change, and the area that always comes up is local control. And we are always, it seems, in a constant battle with the state in order to shut down nuisance bars that are having a major impact on our neighborhoods. And yet, here we are in a local community, in a local approach, and the very next level of government above us, our county supervisors, it seems like we're now in a local control debate with them as well, which is mind-blowing because I know they see the same issues that we see when other forms of government don't allow us locally here to do what's best for our residents in our neighborhoods. And so, to see the growth and the progress that we've had in downtown and to see where we are taking the area and how it's really the economic driver not only for Davenport but the entire Quad Cities, and to then now crush that by building this building and this juvenile detention center in this current location they're trying to build it on, is very disheartening, and I'm shocked that this would happen in such a non-transparent way, where it's not until now, until almost the eleventh hour that we are all having, hearing about it and able to voice our concerns. And as we can tell from everyone that showed up today, there are many concerns, and the neighbors do not want this in their neighborhood. And so, I, I fully support this, and if this resolution alone isn't enough to persuade the county supervisors to go in a different direction, I would love to talk with the neighbors and with Alderwoman McGinnis and, and the others who are against us of other ways we, we can fight it and give our neighborhoods back to our neighbors themselves. So I'm in full support of this resolution, and I hope everyone else on council is as well.
Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you very much, Chair Grip. I've watched the videos of the Scott County supervisors' meetings, and it's very clear from watching the supervisors themselves interact that they are trying to drive this forward. It's not clear what the intent is, it's not clear what they want, it's not clear why, it's not clear if it's based on any kind of realistic numbers, other than the fact that, yes, it appears that the number of juveniles that may be interacting is going down. We do have the Youth Assessment Center, which, as someone said, hopefully will keep more of these children out of the law enforcement and judicial realm. Yeah, I agree. Jobs, something to do, supervision. I think that there's a lot of things that Davenport is doing with our ARPA funds that will help with that, and the fact that they did not work with Davenport or any of the other cities or even the other counties that are served to talk about this in a reasonable, clear planning effort on what is needed, why, what the options are, and how it can be funded. And I agree with Dr. Miller, it does not meet the ARPA requirements. So I'm in support of this resolution. We need to get the attention of the county, and everyone in Scott County, including Davenport, will be paying for this for a very long time if it goes through. So I'm in support of the resolution. Thank you.
Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Yeah, I want to thank everybody who's come down here tonight. I, I really, I know how hard many of you have been working, and I know the time you've been putting in. Alderman Ambrose, I remember that discussion twenty years ago about the Seventh Judicial District and the plans for the Sears building, and it was very disheartening. It was pretty early, my, early days for me here, but it was very disheartening to see... I think the neighbor was grateful it wasn't there, but it just moved up the hill, basically, to where I guess they had had smaller offices, and now they had a bigger facility. I, you know, I truly believe that we cannot continue to put this kind of facility in our downtown area, or in our, in our, not just our downtown area, it's not about the, for me, it's about, also about the, our urban core neighborhoods that, that are struggling so much, and we're working so hard to help. So, I remember, I remember those meetings, too, Alderman Grip, and, and I was down here for those as well. So, we just cannot allow this to continue, and that's why I feel so strongly about this. Thank you.
Alderman Condon?
Thank you. And thank you to you, Alderwoman McGinnis. I've kept track of this for a long time, and there's been a lot of long discussions with concerns and curiosities, and we've watched it evolve, and I think my feedback probably was, well, when this comes to a head, I look forward to having that conversation. And so much easier for me to have a conversation when I, when I can ask lots of dumb questions and see other perspectives, and I'm disappointed that, that we didn't have the opportunity to do that. And it was, it was good of you to get out ahead of this and say, you know, if this is what it needs to be, the discussion begins now, and thank you for getting this out ahead of the council.
All right, seeing no one else on council, I'll make some comments first, and then I'll give the mayor an opportunity, he'd like to speak about this as well. So, I was the, the second with Alderwoman McGinnis to put this on the agenda, and I kind of want to explain to you why I did that. And first off, I want to start with a few things I need to acknowledge. And the first is that the current facility that we have in downtown Davenport for juvenile detention isn't adequate to, to serve the, the needs of what it's supposed to do, to benefit the community. And we also need to acknowledge that this is within the responsibility of, of Scott County. This is their job to make these decisions. It's not the city of Davenport's, and I'm not trying to take away that responsibility from the city council by bringing this resolution forward and having this conversation. I respect the different roles that government bodies play. I, I'm a firm believer in each government body needs to serve the, the role that they're asked by their bylaws and their constituents. However, and to be very frank about it, I have, have not been very happy with the lack of collaboration and transparency by the county on this project. You know, to purchase property in our downtown with the intent of putting a detention center there without seeking input of the city council, fall short of what my expectations are for collaboration between government bodies and the Quad Cities. So we've got a situation where we, our, our input isn't being solicited by another governing body within our community, and we, we've got a detention center that is very likely being built in our city, and it's important to people in our community. So, I thought that it was necessary to publicly make our position known and to publicly listen to the people of Davenport and make sure that the conversation was had and that everybody on the city council and in the city of Davenport had a chance to weigh in here, and that is why I came along with Alderwoman McGinnis on this resolution. I'll turn it over to Mayor Mattson.
So I just want to say thanks to everybody coming first. Some people have said to me over the past, we should limit our public comment, and I say, no, we should have public comment because that's what we're here for, right? So, first, thank you for voicing your concerns and your opinions to us, and then I want to say thank you to Alderwoman McGinnis, whose passion and voice is always a wonderful welcoming tool for me and for this council. Thank you to Alderman Grip, to going with her, and I thank the council for listening because I, I love being part of this body. We maybe disagree sometimes on some particular issues, but what I love about it is we listen to each other, we debate and discuss with each other. Again, maybe we don't agree on everything, but the important thing is that we listen to each other and that we listen to different folks. We might disagree, we might be uncomfortable in what we hear, but that's, that's part of our job is to do it, and so I thank them for bringing this here so that you can have another opportunity to discuss this. I said, as Alderman Grip said, I said, I agree that that facility is not acceptable. So, yes, a new facility is needed. How you do that, what you do with it, and where you put it is very important. I applaud the collaboration with the other governments, the county, the city of Bettendorf, the, the private organizations that have come together at an historic level to, to develop this Youth Assessment Program, and, and know that the Youth Assessment Program is working. It is hiring and hired folks that are of the quality that I haven't seen before, from different organizations that understand the needs of what we're talking about, that over almost fifty referrals for families and children have already been initiated and executed and, and are, are working. And to the ability to take this all the way to the level of five hundred in such a short period of time because the community's been asking for it is important. The issue before the council is the resolution to ask the supervisors to consider a different location. I implore the city council to vote unanimously to do this. We can work together to find another location. We can solve problems, that's what we do, and so, because the council is taking the lead to ask another government body to look at something, I thank you for that. And I ask, and have had in discussions with some of our supervisors, to do some of this, and they are willing to talk with me and talk with others that are sitting up here. This motion, this resolution, I think will, will start that and will help with that so that maybe we can work together, as we have in other situations, for the betterment of the residents and the children that we're talking about. So I thank you for speaking, I thank you for doing what you do, I ask you to continue to do that, I thank the council for what they do, I thank Ms. McGinnis for leading this effort because I, I love her passion, and I thank Alderman Grip for helping her with this, and then the council, I implore you to vote. I assume this will stay on discussion, and that, just so everybody knows, the vote will be next week, okay? We do committee of the whole, so we talk about stuff, right? So I just want everybody to understand, in case you're new to coming, what we do, we won't vote on this tonight. You can probably see that we've had some good discussion. It'll stay there so that we, if we need to, or if you need to, discuss with us again your thoughts. I assume that's where it'll stay, so we can do that, right? But I do ask the council to please consider supporting Alderwoman McGinnis and Alderman Grip in this resolution. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. I would ask Alderwoman Lee to please set our agenda this evening.
Thank you very much. I move that Item One be placed on the consent agenda and Item Two be placed on the discussion agenda.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That concludes community development this evening.
Thank you, Alderman Grip, and just so everybody knows how this works, discussion means next week it will be a separate item to be discussed again, instead of going, like you heard Alderwoman Lee say, consent. Consent means we take all those items and don't discuss them and just vote them by themselves because they're not anything we need to talk about before. If it goes to discussion, that's a separate item, so the same opportunity you had today, if you're so inclined. All right, the next area is public safety. Alderman Jobson, Alderwoman Dickman will lead that discussion. Alderman Jobson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item is Third Consideration Order in Cementing Schedule Seventeen of Chapter Ten Point Nine Six entitled "No Stopping, Standing, or Parking" by adding Fifty Fourth Street along the south side from Pine Street West, five, five hundred and fifty feet between the hours of seven AM and four PM on school days. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing none of that, I'm gonna move on. Item number two is a resolution approving the following lane closures on the list of dates and times. Evan Esser, Ballet Quad Cities Nutcracker School Program, 2021, Adler Theater, One Thirty-Six East Third Street, Friday, December tenth, 2021, seven AM to one thirty PM closure. Northernmost Parking Lane and Northernmost and Middle Travel Lanes on East Third Street from Brady Street to Iowa Street. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this? Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, I'm going to move on. And then the third item is a motion approving beer and liquor license applications. These are all annual license renewals, so typically we do not read these aloud. They're listed for your review. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item and any of these items? And then from council, we have Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I didn't think you saw me. Yes, I had a question about Hilltop Grocery Liquor License. And I just today, I had a, or just tonight, I had a concern brought forth that their, the requirement, I believe, that prior council put upon them was that they have at least 65% food sales and 35% liquor sales, when it was allowed to be put so close to a school. And I don't remember when that was. I remember it as a resident, but I was not on council. So between this week and next, I would ask, can we look at how that was structured and can we also, and I don't know if we can see within a week if they're abiding by this. I understand the difficulties with, you know, license types, but I would also like to ask, does this, if they are not abiding by this, does this impact perhaps their business license? I don't know the answers to any of those things. I would ask that we put this on discussion and that we have that information. And I may be asking to table the liquor license if we don't have everything. And I understand we're moving, you know, we're, we're moving quickly on this. So that's what I would ask. Thank you.
Then Alderwoman Lee?
I just want to second Alderwoman McGinnis. I heard the same concern and I think taking the time to get the information so that we can understand that is very important. So thank you very much. I'd like to see this on discussion.
Seeing no one else, I would ask Alderwoman, Alderwoman Dickman to set the agenda.
I move that all items be placed on consent, with the exception of the Hilltop Grocery Liquor License to be placed on discussion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Oh, second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson, Alderman Dick, Alderwoman Dickman. The next area is public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Dorman will discuss this. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have 14 items this evening for public works. Item number one is the third consideration of an ordinance citing Chapter 13.40 to the Davenport Municipal Code entitled "Public Water Supply Well Protection." Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel?
Alderman Dorman?
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. So with this, we passed our amendment last cycle and so I, I think we're all happy, happier with that, that this ordinance now only pertains to the one well that's around Genesis. The other concern that I, I did have was how it would impact the neighborhood and how it would look. And so after discussions with the water company, they don't have finalized plans yet, but they did share a picture of their pump station they have up on Northwest Boulevard that looking at it looks just like a house minus the big caterpillar generator that's right next to it that they need for power backup. And so I am, I, I do believe that they would do something the same for this neighborhood. And so that's no longer a concern of mine and I'm hoping that we can continue to make sure that the water company keeps the residents in mind and make sure that building stays in charm and fit with the neighborhood. So with that, I would say that I don't have any other concerns with, with this ordinance at this time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution introducing the proposed resolution of necessity for the FY 2022 alley resurfacing program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving and authorizing the use of condemnation and commencement of condemnation proceedings if necessary for the right of ways and easements associated with the Veterans Memorial Parkway Trail Extension Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you, Chair. I just have a question for staff on this. I have not received any calls or anything from any of the property owners that are being approached for the condemnation. What have you heard from the property owners?
So this is kind of, excuse me, Clay, Mayor Public Works. So this is kind of something that we just get out in front of and put a resolution. We haven't yet started working with the property owners. We will. Certainly our hope and desire is to have some form of agreement with all the property owners. This is just something in case we need to go to condemnation. If we do, I'll make sure to reach out and let you know what's going on.
If you, if you hear from anyone and/or if you enter into condemnation?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to meet with you and at least see the, the property owner sometime.
No, happy to do so.
Thank you, Clay.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement between the city of Davenport and the Iowa Department of Transportation that provides state funding through the city bridge construction program for the West 46th Street Bridge over Cardinal Creek Replacement Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution awarding the contract for the partial roof replacement at Public Works Project to White Roofing of Eldridge, Iowa, in the amount of $555,779. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution accepting work performed under the FY 2021 Contract Sewer Repair Program by Peterson Plumbing and Heating Company of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $527,668.47. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution accepting work completed under this CY 2021 ADA Ramp Program by Kelly Construction of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $259,616.48. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And I'll read items number eight through 14 and then ask for what are comments. Item number eight is a resolution assessing the cost of boarding up buildings at various lots and tracks of real estate. Item number nine is a resolution assessing the cost of brush and removal at various lots and tracks of real estate. Item number 10 is a resolution assessing the cost of condemned property demolitions at various lots and tracks of real estate. Item number 11 is a resolution assessing the cost of sidewalk repair at various lots and tracks of real estate. Item number 12 is a resolution assessing the cost of tree removal at various lots and tracks of real estate. Item number 13 is a resolution assessing the cost of weed cutting at various lots and tracks of real estate. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address any of them items? Counsel? Seeing none, these items will move on. And finally, item number 14 is a motion approving change order number two to the Americor LLC of Bluegrass, Iowa, in the amount of $75,000 for the CY 2021 Sidewalk Repair Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Dorman, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I move that all 14 items are placed on the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign and that concludes public works for this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn, Alderman Dorman. The next area is finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will discuss. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have four items on finance this evening. The first item is the second consideration ordinance amending Chapter 2.04 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled "Precincts and Wardes to Establish Precinct and Ward Boundaries Based Upon the 2020 Census." Noting that this staff recommends suspension of the rules and passage on, of third consideration, I'll ask if there's anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that will move on and be voted on later in the agenda. Item number two is a resolution setting a public hearing on granting an easement to Iowa American Water Company across the southernmost 46 feet of city-owned parcel X0155-27J. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Now item will move on. Item number three is a resolution awarding a service contract for occupational health services to Genesis Occupational Health of Davenport, Iowa. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Item number three will move on. And the fourth item on our agenda is a resolution awarding a sole source contract to National Network of Safe Communities at John J. College for technical advising and assistance to implement group violence intervention in Davenport with a two-year project cost of $385,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Next on our agenda, we have purchases listed from 10,000 to 50,000. We don't read each of those individually, but they are noted there for your information. Alderman Cornet, will you please set our agenda?
I move that all items be placed on the consent agenda.
We'll put number one on discussion. Anything else to go on?
All right. Put number one on discussion and all others on the consent, consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? And that concludes finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet. Next item is, are there any ordinances, resolutions, or motions? There are none for this evening. Next item, is there any public of business? So if anybody would like to talk to the council, you have five minutes, anything other than what was on the agenda. Very good. Are there any reports, Ms. Spiegel? Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening.